Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item B, approval of the agenda, and I would just like to note that within the regular agenda, number one will no longer be on the agenda tonight and is being pulled at the request of the applicant. So I will gladly take a motion to move an amended version of the agenda without regular number one.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's motion and a second. Any discussion on the amended agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 There are none opposed. C, presentations. Do we have any presentations for tonight?
No.
There are none. Do we have any public comments or inquiries? Sergeant? We're good? Okay, no public inquiries. On the consent agenda for tonight, approve payments and disbursements. Two, accept improvements and approve pay request number two for the 2025 mill and overlay project. Three, amend the motion authorizing engineering services for 2026 crosswalk layouts. Four, approve MPCA grant agreement for the North Water Treatment Plan. Five, authorize geotactical services for CASA 14 water main project. Six, approve first amendment to development agreement for Prairie Sky Twin Homes. Seven, approve landscape security reduction for Union Park Phase One Development. Eight, appointment of deputy city clerk. Nine, approve to change job description from administrative services coordinator to administrative services director. Ten, approve 2026 liquor license renewals. Eleven, approve the 2026 meeting calendar. Twelve, reappoint park commissioners. Thirteen, reappoint economic development authority commissioners. Fourteen, reappoint planning commissioners. And fifteen, authorize certification of delinquent stormwater bills and utility bills. And that is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent or to amend?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
There's motion, a second to approve the consent agenda as written. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 There are none opposed. That brings us to the first item of regular agenda, which now is the lawful gambling city code update and revenue spending. Finance Coordinator, Kramer.
Yeah, hi, everyone. I really don't like presenting or public speaking, so this is not going to be fun, but I'm going to try my best. Feel free to laugh if needed. Okay. So what is lawful gambling? It is the operation, conduct, or sale of bingo raffles, paddle wheels, tip boards, and pole tabs. And we have three current charitable gambling organizations that conduct business within the city. And so we had an inquiry from one of those organizations about our process, what we are spending our funds on, and going forward, why we haven't filed information with the state. So we are looking at our ordinance, and it was determined that it needed some updates. So I worked with Sarah on those updates. And what I sent to you in the packet is what we had come up with. And so there are a few changes. It was originally adopted in 1997, and it was more restrictive than state statute. So we had the premise permit issuance updated to not include an address from the organization within the city of Lake Elmo, and it defaulted to the state regulations for that. And then all of our updates align with the gambling board, League of Minnesota Cities, and Sarah's recommendations. And some other ordinance changes where the, let's see, outdated liquor gambling section, removal of 3% grocery supplement requirement, and no premise permit fee or renewal permit is required, since we weren't doing that previously. And then we did add definitions in trade area, which I suppose is probably the most important one that I forgot, which outlines where the money can be spent. And we updated that to include all of our local cities that are surrounding us, including the different, three different school districts. And then, I guess, so now it's just a matter of a question of, once the ordinance is updated, whether or not we collect the 10%. And we were already previously headed in our ordinance, we were just not enforcing it. So we would like to enforce it for those three entities that are currently operating within city limits. So... Where am I going with that? Sorry. Lost my train of thought. Okay, so one of the requirements of the state statute is that we create a gambling fund. So we did do that this year, and all of the money that we collect is going into that fund. And then we will be reporting the contributions received and the uses of those funds. And we will also be putting them in the budget for next year. And so we're tentatively budgeting $20,000 in revenues for 2026. We actually just received another check from Oakdale Athletic Association this last week. And so we're up to like $6,500 in revenue that we have collected. So we don't know what the total is going to be, but we will be having at least two more, one tap and ladder is up and running, because they did ask already for charitable gambling permits for that. And then our recommendation for the use of the funds is to allocate the funds to the Washington County Sheriff's Office, which is a law bond statute. And it directly benefits all of Lake Elmo residents. And I have recommended motions to adopt the new ordinance, publishing the summary publication of that ordinance, and then authorizing us to use those funds next year for the law enforcement contract. Any questions?
Questions from his Kramer.
So when you talk about like the Oakdale Athletic Association operating at Twin Points, is that they sell pole tabs?
Yes.
At Twin Points, and same for the Stillwater Area Hockey Association, they sell them at Lakewood Taverns. So there's no like, just a bar or restaurant that has, this would apply to as well?
No.
Okay.
Nope, they have to apply for a premise permit to operate at those locations. And so you had already approved those three that we currently have. So...
Question then. So historically, we've had in place our ordinances for this for years.
Yes.
And that included the 10%?
Yes.
And have we ever historically been voluntarily provided 10% from any of those entities? Obviously, the oldest one would be Twin Point.
Right. So previously, it was just the JCs there. And Oakdale recently took over for them in March of this year. But the JCs always donates more than what they actually earn, because on top of their pole tabs. So we hadn't been collecting, because they were voluntarily just donating those proceeds to us. So, but Oakdale, when they started, automatically started sending us checks this year.
And I guess the root of my question is, because I know pole tabs are regulated by department revenue, and they do audits with those very regularly.
It's the Minnesota Gambling Board, but yeah.
They work together with them, and the revenue will go out and do site visits with the gambling board. And I'm just surprised at no point, when they're checking their books, they haven't seen...
It's not their, like, they wouldn't enforce them to send us that money. It's on us to enforce those regulations and ordinances, and we did not do that.
And then what does that look like moving forward then for staff time and how that process works to ensure that happens?
Right. So the checks, wow. So that's just a matter of processing any funds that come through and keeping track of that for the paperwork that needs to be filed by March 15th. And I don't know, I figure it'll be about an hour for me to do that. And then it's just a matter of filing said paperwork. But we'll have to work with Julie on how we're going to collect that. But since she's on a medical leave, I have not been able to do that.
In the case of Party Barn, it's not a process change for them, because it's new anyways. So that they haven't, it's not a change for their process.
No, no.
None.
Do they have pole tabs?
They will.
They will, yep.
And that'll be that, like, that they profit off of?
Yes.
Not a association fundraiser money?
So they are with Woodbury Area Athletic Association.
Okay, so it's for an association as well. I guess maybe just to follow up on that. I mean, is that, do they split the revenues with those associations? Or do the associations, like, does Woodbury Athletic Association with the Party Barn, do they take all the proceeds from the pole tabs?
I honestly...
Or is that a split?
So I don't know exactly how that works, but I do know that they have to typically pay some sort of like leasing fee to have their, like, stand within, I don't know...
Sure.
Yeah. I don't know how much. It's set in statute. I didn't really look into that side of it, because we don't regulate any of that. That's all regulated by the gambling board.
But it sounds like these are primarily done for the purpose of raising funds for these associations.
Correct. Yes.
And then just to be clear, we don't have to charge a, we don't have to collect revenue from these?
Nope. Nope. So if you wanted to tell me we shouldn't, we can certainly not do that also.
And the funds, they're allocated towards the Washington County Law Enforcement. Have they always been allocated for Washington County, or is that new?
New. So this whole process is technically new, because we hadn't been collecting the funds.
Sure. Okay.
Previously.
So Matt, it's charitable gambling, so charitable associations generally keep most of the money. They can pay a small portion under law to the establishment where they have their, they're set up within.
They can, but don't have to.
But the, but the association where they're set up, like, you know, Party Barn or whatever, doesn't, doesn't profit from that?
Great. Okay. Thank you.
No. Yeah, there's no profit.
I guess process wise, so in this recommended motion, so it goes to Sheriff's Department, who we depend upon for great work. I assume there are identified things that have already been discussed for how those proceeds would be used then by the department?
We don't actually, we just go towards the overall contract amount that we pay every year.
So to help reduce the amount that we're using from the operating budget?
Yes. But I mean, you can use it for any of the other things that I outlined in that guide. So I mean, it's not like you have to. It's just I recommended, because that way everybody benefits that lives here from that.
Any other further questions before a motion? As we can't discuss ideas without a motion.
Move to adopt ordinance 2025-017, amending the Lake Elmo City Code of Ordinance by amending chapter 11.04 relating to lawful gambling.
Second.
Discussions on ordinance 017. So is this where, nope, never mind. So this is, topic three is where it's regarding where it goes to. Any discussion on ordinance 17? Seeing none, call...
So, okay, I just want to make sure. So this is pertaining to the 10%?
That's motion three.
That'd be motion three?
Yes.
Yep.
Got it.
This is specifically for just the ordinance, because it needs to be updated regardless, because it was a lot of antiquated language in there. So...
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Good to go?
Good to go.
All those in favor of ordinance 2025-017, please signify by saying aye.
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 There are none opposed?
They didn't update the resolution number. Sorry.
Move to adopt resolution 2025-081, authorizing publication summary of ordinance 2025-17.
I'm going to go out on a limb here that there's probably not discussion on a publication summary, and I will need to vote on this one. All those in favor of resolution 2025...
Support first.
Second.
Good point. And there is a second. All those in favor of 2025-081, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. There are four yeses for that.
Move to authorize staff, proceed with budgeting for lawful gambling revenues in Fund 210, and to allocate the proceed towards the city's law enforcement contract.
Second.
Discussion.
I guess I can start it out. I just, I would prefer to, I think this is something we could come back to in the future, if there's other uses or way that gambling is being done in the city. I feel like for this, these are specifically for sports organizations, where they're fundraising money for kids to be able to play sports, and to make those more manageable financially. $20,000 is what we're budgeting. I, you know, I know every dollar counts for the city perspective, but I think $20,000 probably matters for kids that could benefit from that, from like a sports standpoint. So I would prefer to just, I guess, kind of continue with what we've been doing. But I guess just make it concrete that we don't actually have a revenue share, we don't take some of the revenue from these fundraisers, from these associations. Would be my preference.
Acting Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You know, I think it's kind of, we're designated towards the law enforcement contract, but in some ways, it's irrelevant. We have $20,000 that we weren't planning on getting. We can, you know, give it to the law enforcement center and to reduce the other budget, their budget by 20,000, make them neutral, and use that for youth sports. It's kind of a, you know, sleight of hand in some ways. We're just adding $20,000 general to our revenues. And we can spend this only for certain purposes, but that doesn't mean, you know, we can't up our spending somewhere else. Or we could reduce our property tax levy by 20,000.
I am shocked that you would suggest that.
Unfortunately, that's not a covered expense there, but yeah.
Additional thoughts?
I concur with Councilman Hearn. No additional thoughts?
So your thought would be to have it be 0%?
Yes. Yep.
And my thought, again, there's no one on the planet who's going to say a donation to law enforcement is bad.
Correct.
But in this case, you know, if it's for a specific program, you know, helping with the K-9 training, or giving additional equipment, absolutely. If it's to, my thought would be if it's to help reduce the burden for our contract, and it's just shifting. My thought was, we have other costs that we do on a yearly basis. Our, the labor cost for July 4th parade, for festivals, some of those things that are yearly that benefit the community as a whole, and are nice to halves, was kind of where I was going to be leaning. But honestly, maybe it's worthy of just at this point, we don't, do we have to designate something at this point? So not even the issue of 0%, can we not designate anything for the fund yet? Or do we have to have something where it's designated?
Only if you want to spend the funds. So I don't really, I'd have to ask Sarah how that would work for all of the money we've already received. Because I don't know if we would return it to them. We would, because it'd be...
There's still, if I may.
Yes.
Acting Mayor. If we've received the funds, those were largely somewhat donated. But if, if there's, if it's just not budgeted to expense, it just sits in that fund.
Right.
So anything that we haven't approved for purchase, essentially, we haven't budgeted, it just sits in that fund. And there, I don't, did you say there's no requirement to spend the funds in a certain period of time?
There is not.
So we can essentially collect those funds, wait until there's a, some amount, just have it kind of sitting there until there's a purpose that we remember we can use that money for?
So we could use it as an ad hoc situation in 2026, when we want to have something special for July 4th parade?
So long as it fits within those statutory requirements for those funds.
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. You can use it for the 4th of July parade, actually. Oakdale uses theirs for their summer fest a lot of times.
And I guess that's where I would kind of lean myself. But we essentially have three different thoughts going on right now. And we have an underlying motion here to have it be 10%, and to go to the Washington County Sheriff's Department, which is a fantastic entity.
Maybe just to add to this, too. I mean, again, I think it was kind of brought up. It's like, well, what about the resources that are going to have to be spent to collect this money, right? The staff that's going to have to monitor this? Shaking, no, it's going to be easy?
No.
I don't think it'll be that.
Okay.
We already, we already have numerous processes.
Now that it's been brought up, it shouldn't be that difficult. Okay. Well, then I guess I suppose go back to my first point then of, I just, if it's a sports associations for youth sports, I don't think we need to take $20,000 from the youth sports in this situation.
It's fair.
We're not taking it from them.
Well, what, yeah, we are. What are we doing for this revenue? They're, they're doing the fundraising. What are we getting from it? We're getting revenue that they're, they're doing the fundraising. That money would not have come to us.
We're allowing them to do the fundraising in the city of Lake Elmo.
Allowing them to put pole tabs into a bar. I just, I, I, I don't think that's a big ask.
I don't either.
Well, that's fine. I, I don't think we need to take the $20,000 from the youth sports.
Further discussion on the underlying motion for motion number three. Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor to move to authorize staff to proceed with budgeting for lawful gambling revenues in Fund 210 and allocate it to the city's law enforcement contract, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion fails. One, two, three. Is there another motion anyone would like to make?
Mr. Acting Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
A clarification point. The ordinance that you just adopted has the 10% in it?
Yes.
So I don't know if you want to go back and amend that or not, or if you just want to leave it in there and not enforce it like you were doing. I guess that's an option, too. So you should probably have a discussion about that.
If anyone wishes to change it, then the motion would be a motion to reconsider. Otherwise, there would be a motion to dedicate it to a specific area, or we move on to the item three for chief.
Motion to reconsider ordinance 2025-017.
Second.
Please discuss your, oh, well, all those in favor of the motion to reconsider, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
No.
No. Motion does not pass. So then we have, so one and two remain in place, but at this point, we have not dedicated to any specific fund.
Need four for that?
Yeah, Mr. Acting Mayor, I'm not aware that unanimous vote is required for motion to reconsider. It just needs to be brought by somebody on the...
Oh, it's just a motion to second.
Yeah. And then if you get them to reconsider, so let's say the motion reconsider passes, then you go to the main motion, which is the ordinance, and you reconsider that ordinance. And then at that point, it sounds like Councilmember Hearn might want to make some changes to the ordinance before it's adopted.
So the motion to reconsider is not voted on?
It's voted on.
And it was 2-2 tie?
It's just saying, hey, can we go back to the ordinance?
Correct.
And talk about it. And you had a 3-1 vote, I think, on that?
The motion to reconsider tied 2-2.
Oh, it was 2-2? Okay. Then it did fail, I guess.
Got it.
So then we remain, one and two have passed, but we do not have a current allocation for Fund 210. It has been clarified, we do not need to at this time say where it shall be dedicated to. So we can have an additional motion if there's a specific place that someone would like, or we can go from, go from there. Seeing no further motions, I will move along to item number three. Statewide Volunteer Firefighting Plan. And thank you for the presentation, and thank you for acting on this as well. It is always good to be able to have some process improvement and update ordinances as needed. Chief Callis.
Microphone on. There we go. Mayor, Acting Mayor, council members, before you have got a present, or just a staff report on an increase to the statewide volunteer firefighter plan, it's the pension that goes to our paid-on-call firefighters. January of 2024, we entered into the statewide volunteer plan. It's administered by Minnesota Para, and basically eliminated our relief association at that time that would take care of the relief or the pension benefit for the paid-on-call firefighters. Coming to council tonight to ask for an increase in that benefit, our current benefit level stands at $8,000 per year of service, and asking to increase our benefit level to $9,000 per year of service. As part of the SVF plan, Para provides us a report in July of kind of where we're at with our benefit plan, how it looks, and they give us kind of a report card of where we stand. One of the big keys to that, that report is our funding amount. And in our funding report, or our funding amount for the last report of July, that came July of 2025, we are 147% funded. We had a retirement that was paid out, a large retirement that was paid out this past year, just a few months ago, at nearly a quarter million dollars. A member served 32 years of service. So that liability amount was taken off. And appreciate Nina for working on a calculation for us. Our funding amount right now, based on the last report, is now at 134% with that large dollar amount taken out of there. So currently, our fund's well-funded, is in good standing, and asking council for support to move to our benefit level to $9,000 per year of service.
Thank you, chief.
In the staff report, I did, I did include some neighboring fire departments that do have relief associations or benefit plans that are in the SVF. And though I didn't have some of the 26 increases known, I took the 25 benefit levels and the ones that I did know that were having increases for 26. And out of that group of fire departments, we fall pretty much right in the middle, when we're at $9,000. Don't have much more to go over, so if there's any questions.
Questions for chief.
I just have a potentially very dumb question, but if, like, let's say you served 20 years, is that a $180,000 pension per year for that firefighter?
It's $9,000 per year of service. So 20 years is vested at 100%. 20 years times $9,000 would be the payout amount for that individual.
It's just a one-time payout.
At age 50. It's a, our current plan's a lump sum payout.
Got it.
After the age of 50.
Okay.
Our, our vesting amounts when we went into the SVF changed a little bit. So our firefighters are vested in this plan at 40% at five years, and they're 100% vested at 20 years.
Okay.
The other big piece to this, too, is where the money comes from. It comes from the state. It comes from the fire state aid. And by statute, fire state aid has to go to the firefighter's retirement pension. Over the past few years, we've seen this dollar amount go from roughly $60,000 in 2017 to $117,000 this year. So there's a big calculation and formula on how we get to that fire state amount. Because of our growth, because of our development and market values, that all kind of plays into that fire stated amount that we get from the state. And that's a direct pass-through to the, to the pension fund. So...
Sure.
That's how this is also funded, on top of our, the investment accounts that are managed through Para.
Good. Thank you.
Other questions for chief?
Motion to approve resolution number 2025-077, resolution opting to increase the benefit level for firefighters who are vested in the statewide volunteer firefighter plan to 9,000 per year of service.
Support.
There's a motion and a second. There's a motion and a second to approve motion 2025-077, any discussion?
I think this is a good move for the city, we need to have something that makes it worthwhile for people to serve as volunteer firefighters, and we need to be competitive with our neighbors, or we won't be able to get volunteers. And, um, I, I think this is a very wise decision on, on the part of the city, and I thank them for their volunteer service.
I think you said it for the council right there, and thank you for bringing this to our attention as well, I know in the past this has come up again in prior years, so thank you again for getting the increase in there, as it is warranted, is necessary, and is deserved. All those in favor of motion 2025-077, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. There are none opposed, motion passes 4-0. That brings us to council reports. Anything?
I was going to give a discussion on the theory of relativity in astrophysics this evening.
So moving on.
No report.
No report.
No report.
Uh, whoa, 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 yeah.
It's jumping right over you.
Geez, uh, so Councilmember Cregness and myself attended the Lake Elmo Airport Advisory Committee meeting yesterday. And among the main-ish topics, yeah, not even issues, topics, uh, the noise complaints data was presented, and there are four households who provided over 1,000 complaints over the last three months. It is the highest level of concentration of complaints in the metro for any of our airports. It's also consistent, and above and beyond that, we had a pretty good conversation about ways to focus on the positives of the airport. And myself and the other co-chair Luke Peterson met with School District 834 last week, along with members of the EA, which is their Experimental Aircraft Association. And the Lake Elmo Arrow, which is the teaching school, to discuss ways to get a student pathway for kids to get involved in aviation, whether as a pilot, as a mechanic, air traffic controller, whatever it is, and to get them involved. In it at a younger and younger age, as those jobs will not be taken by AI, and they're well-paid. So that, that conversation's moving forward, several ways were identified where the district can be incorporated into airport, uh, logistics starting this year. And, uh, I remain optimistic that a pathway can be created, long-term, we're gonna have to, we're gonna be talking with the county, and probably Delta and Sun Country to try and get a funding mechanism for long-term sustainability. But I, I absolutely think it is a win-win for the community, it's a win for the airport, it's an asset for this community, it's a positive thing to focus on, and I, I think it's, it's something that we can definitely. Leverage for everyone's benefit, especially our kids, so they can pay for their parents' retirement by being a pilot on a long-haul route, that would be fantastic.
So when is that pancake breakfast?
The. Let's go straight to the food, so the Experimental Aircraft Association holds a pancake breakfast, and it is the. It is in June, and Marlin said it is the second something in June.
Oh, it's not till June, okay.
Yes, it's not till June, but I'll definitely, I'll make sure, we'll be able to give updates on that, is a fantastic fundraiser, and with that money, they actually are able to send kids to a program out in Oshkosh, where it's scholarship to send, send kids. To do camps out in Oshkosh, Oshkosh is a massive airport for various purposes, and one of the things they do is they get, they do kids camps, it's fantastic, so that pancake breakfast, yes, it is in June, I will give an update before that.
Cool.
That is my update. Anyone else?
No report.
No report.
Ms. Miller?
No report.
Jason?
No report.
Anything? 0 for 4? Okay, moving on, 0 for 5, 4 for 6, Chief?
No report.
8?
Open house tomorrow at Oakland Middle School, 4 to 6 p.m. for County Road 17, County Road 10, preliminary design intersection.
And the county will be fully running this, but we are obviously there.
I'll be there.
Sounds good, counselor?
No report.
And with that, at the time of 7:38, meeting is adjourned, thank you all.